Good evening and welcome to the Herkimer Central School District Board of Education Regular Meeting Wednesday, December 16, 2020. First item on the agenda is a pledge allegiance. We'll scan and say the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the list is public comment. The Board of Education welcomes public comment and community input at our meetings. Are we caution speakers that we are not authorized to engage in conversations pertaining to individual students, faculty, staff, or administrators? Topics of this nature may only be discussed during executive session and must be coordinated with the superintendent prior to the board meeting. That being said, is there any public comment?
We probably need to remove that from the virtual.
Probably a good idea.
Because we can't, unless the administrator's over the top, really.
We posted Emily's email address as a place to send comments ahead of time, and I don't think she got here.
Okay, sounds good. Next on the list is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for that? Everybody's frozen.
I see Diane.
Diane? And Scott?
And Rich.
Okay, okay. Any motion to approve the agenda? We have 6-0. Just let it known that Mr. Mahievic will be a little late. Next on the list is board communications.
You received several. I just wanted to just make a comment about the minutes. And I'm wondering, because I was reading through them, and like, we had the resolution for the Bosse's rentals. We talked about that last week. We approved it, but there was a discussion. Do you think we should notate that that discussion was had in case somewhere down the road, somebody says, well, did you all just approve this, or did you discuss this? There was an issue. You follow up on that?
Do you want to just say discussion followed, or do you want the discussion to be laid out?
I don't know what, I mean, I guess that's something I wanted to see what you guys wanted to do. I think at least the notation that we discussed.
So this is in the minutes discussion?
Yeah, like, so the minutes would reflect that there was a discussion.
Okay. Do you want to discuss that when we get to the minutes? Because we're at the board communications.
Great, so, okay, I got you. Yeah, my fault.
I'm not trying to be difficult with you.
No, I know. The agenda, I forget. I got lost there. Yes, my bad, I'm sorry.
All right, Brian?
Oh, no problem. We're up to board communications.
So you received several information in a separate email that were not included in the original packet from me this afternoon, which ordinarily would have been on the table, but I realized I couldn't bring them to the table today.
I'll make a motion to place all appropriate board communications on file with the district clerk.
So we have a motion and a second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor? Next on the list is now the approval of the minutes. So we'll do both of them for the regular meeting Wednesday, November 18, 2020, and the regular meeting Wednesday, October 14, 2020, amended. We get a motion for that? Brandy, second by Diane. Was there any discussion on that?
Generally, not with, well, I guess with the November meeting, that's where drew my attention was going forward. I wanted to see if we wanted to add some, whatever we want to notate it, whether there's discussion about something that was approved, I think it'd be beneficial. And if we want any type of detail, I'm okay with that too, but at least that we can document that we discussed.
So do you want to amend the vote specifically to say the regular meeting minutes? With the addition that discussion followed, sometimes it'll say this in the minutes, it'll say, somebody moved, somebody seconded, discussion followed, and then the approval.
Right. Yeah, I just think that would be better. It doesn't, I don't, I don't have a problem with even these as is, I think even these are maybe more forward.
Okay. I don't take issue with that. Sometimes the detailed discussion can be cumbersome and regretful, but I also think it can be a good historical log. It depends. Sometimes in the past, I think people have said that they wanted something included in the minutes, like, they would say, could you include this in the minutes? So if you, I don't know how you guys want to approach it.
Yeah, I guess you could do it as an amendment, right?
If you, if we're moving something, and sometimes you, if you want something specifically to be in the minutes, you can just tell us, and then Suzie knows that, you know, that I had some hesitation about this, and I'd like that noted in the minutes. I've seen that before, if somebody wants it, even though they voted for it, they did.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Well, I think it'd be, that's what, with the space issue that we talked about regarding the rentals, I think that would be, you know, beneficial for people to realize that we discussed that, we were worried about.
I'm not opposed to that, I just, I just want to know when I should include it, and when Suzie should know to include it, and when not. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm good with if you want to add it, then the individual person can add it. I'm okay with that too. You know, like, we amended the last October minutes, so that's the best way to go.
Are you guys okay with that, Brian?
Yeah.
So there was a motion and a second on the minutes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Well, I wasn't here October 14th, so.
You're killing me. Okay, so we'll go to.
There's a rule against. So I was here for the amendment of those minutes, so I'll vote them both in, that's fine.
Okay, 6-0. Next on the list is business reports.
Looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt of items A through I.
So motion for A through I. Brandy, second. Diane, any discussion on any of those items?
I had a couple things, and this is probably more for Regina. I was looking through the general warrant report, and the payroll, there was a lot of payroll on there. They were all came under the same PO number. Does that get broken out somewhere later on as individuals?
There's a payroll, like, we do an encumbrance for all the payroll for different, for the year, so it's not like broken out that way.
So there was, and it was on the general warrant and the federal warrant, there was payroll on both of those, and they were all the same PO numbers and differing amounts and accounts. So is that, is that what I'm thinking, payroll, like, a bi-weekly payroll?
So the, so the federal payroll, so we can get federal grants, so people's payroll is attributed to the federal grants, so that's encumbered in the federal as a PO.
Mm-hmm.
But it's still coded to the right code too, so.
So there's no way to look at that report and say this $2,000 went to John Doe, probably?
Not that easily enough in that report.
Not for that report, but I'm saying, is it tied back somewhere? So they're paid off of one general PO, and you guys have the details somewhere along the line.
Well, I mean, every week, well, every pay week, I have to go through what's called a payroll variance report before I certify the payroll to look at. Every, every pay that's, so the first payroll, first 12-month payroll of the year, we figure out and verify that everybody makes the right amount of money. That's certified by me and the claims lawyer. Then, every payroll, I go through a variance report which says whose pay was different from one to the next, and then I have to go through and say, why is it different? There should be backup for why it's different. So we do that at every single payroll. And then when the 10-month people come back in September, same thing, we go through and make sure that they're paid the right amount. And then every payroll after that, I look at a variance report, and I go through and pick a random set of them, to make sure that the variances are explained. I don't check every single one, but I check six to 10 of them. So we track that in detail, and your claims law department tracks that in detail.
And that was just a monthly, that was just monthly payments that we saw there?
Yeah, it was, yes.
It's not a quarterly thing, it's not monthly.
It's, yeah, and the payroll was verified by me every payroll, so twice a month, or sometimes three, it'll be three times a month this month.
And the only other thing is the exception report, there was a lack of two signatures for Bernie Buss amounts, but they were low. Why did we need two signatures?
Because of the transportation, or sports, probably, sports run, or extracurricular run, or extracurricular.
So that requires.
Yeah. But it wasn't paid off, that one wasn't paid off a PO, that was paid just on double signatures.
Oh, I get it. So it was like a separate check, so that's why, okay.
Any discussion?
Did I do okay?
Yes, that was perfect.
I get a, I get a B+?
All right.
So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? 6-0.
Looking for a motion disposable, dispose of surplus items, item J.
So we get a motion for that? Diane, second. Rich?
Bob is here.
All right. Is there any discussion on that item? I actually did have some discussion on that. I was just wondering, is that one of the ones that we sell on auction?
What is that?
Is that an item that we would sell on auction? Or is it?
Sometimes things like that may or may not get any. Regina, is the plan to use eBay on that, or the Auction International?
Correct. Yes, we'll put it on there.
And we can get what we'll get, right? I mean, I don't know, how old is that now? Is that like, it's pretty old, isn't it?
It is pretty old. We usually do pretty decent on that website, but there's no telling what we will get for it.
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? All those in favor? 6-0.
Looking for a motion on change in pay rate? Okay.
So we get a motion on that? Diane, second. Michelle, any discussion on that item? Make a note that Mr. Mahievic is here now. All those in favor? 7-0.
Looking for a motion on the federal single audit?
We get a motion on that. Diane, second by Scott. Any discussion on that item?
Yeah, I got a question. It made no sense to me. They said our internal controls were good, but they made no opinion on how strong our internal controls were.
Right.
So what did they test it?
So the federal single audit is interesting, and Regina can probably speak a little bit more to this if she's. You still there, Regina? So I think the way they talk about the internal controls, most of our, most of our federal audit is spent on salary, and the internal controls are good, but I think that's a typical finding for them. I could be wrong. Am I right about that, that they typically won't make an opinion there, but don't, but say they don't take issue with it?
Correct.
It's similar to what they do with extracurricular funds, they'll oftentimes say things like that. You're a little bit nervous about it, but this one, this one is just a find, it's just a clean audit.
Yeah, I guess I would expect this, yeah, the internal controls were appropriate and seemed strong. You know what I mean? I don't know, it was odd.
Yeah.
The wording's odd, if I, if it just doesn't say much.
Right, I think that's what you typically, typically will see in the federal audit, unless there's a problem. If there's an issue, you'll see it, and they'll be glad.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the internal controls for the federal grants are essentially the same as the internal controls for the general funds. I'm not sure that, it's very little difference between the way the federal funds come in and go out than the way state funds or local funds go in and go out.
No, I don't have any concern with what they said, it's just how they said and didn't say the second part of it.
Yeah. I read, I read about it all the time, and I'm like, the audit, the gas, the reports that are contained in there, like, there's so much stuff in the audit that is so non-important and not relevant, that it gets tiresome to me, because they just basically have to go through checkboxes to go through the audit. Important thing is that they're timing out expenses, to ensure they're expensed right, they're doing all of those things that they need to do, a lot of those stuff, it's just check, 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 check it through. Anything else?
All those in favor? 7-0.
Do you have the change order update? It's one of the things that I would report on, I don't know if you have questions on it. Okay. And pull up my stuff. So my December business report, revenue and expense projections are about the same as last month. I gave you that in a separate, in a separate email. We did get our initial state aid outpour report for the 2021 school year, and we are on target with projections from the spring. The state has not indicated if it will carry through with any mid-year cuts as of yet, but still leaves them on the table. So the governor's been pretty non-committal to whether there'll be cuts or not, but they're certainly on the table. District will run a small surplus if revenues come in as projected, and will run above a projected 1.1 million or 1.2 million dollar deficit if the state aid cuts aid by 20% without making further reductions to the expense side budget. Development of the 2021, 2022 budget will likely be delayed, as the governor has hinted that he won't write a budget until the federal government acts. Federal government doesn't like, look like they'll act until after the new administration is sworn in in January, so we're looking at not really being able to do much with the budget until at the earliest, probably February, so we'll be working to build some budget contingencies based on certain things, but we really have so many unknowns right now. We don't really know how this year's going to come out, so how are we going to know how to build next year's budget when we don't even know what's going on this year yet?
What's that, what's you usually, a month behind, or usually in January timeframe, do you start building on?
Usually, right now, I have a pretty good idea about what the budget's going to look like. So for me, right, yeah, for the following year, right? I did it in November, I went through and built a rollover budget, but I feel like if I were to do much with that rollover budget right now, I'd be assuming that I'm fine this year. But if they do a 20% aid cut this year, and that's what we're starting from in 2021, 2022, I mean, the rollover budget's pretty meaningless this year. We're going to have to make massive changes. We can weather one year of this, but we can't, we can't coast into 2122 and say we're going to go through $1 million again, or more in the second year in a row. So we would be looking at trying to reduce expenditures by between $1 and $2 million for 2122. To do that, I mean, the cuts that we would have to make, the magnitude of the cuts that we are to make are so draconian that I'm hesitant to do it. So I'm in, I'm in the same position the governor is in, in his mind. He's saying, I don't want to do anything until I know what the federal government's going to give me, and I kind of don't want to do anything until I know what the state government's going to give us, because I don't think that any of the decisions that we're going to make are even rational until we know something. And we really know less than the governor does at this point. At least he's in control, I'm not in control at all. You know, I, we can probably raise taxes by 100 or 200,000 dollars. So the magnitude of cuts that he's talking about at state aid are just cannot be made up locally. There's no way we're going to be able to turn around and raise taxes in the kind of realm that would be required to make up the cuts that he's looking at. He's thinking, there's no way I can raise taxes at the state level to make up for my deficit. So we're all kind of in that, all the local leaders, the state leaders are all looking at things in almost exactly the same way right now. And it's a lot of frustration, and we're all just trying to hold everything together the best we can at this point. But I'm just trying to give you a heads up, it's not that I'm not working on it, I am working on contingencies, and I've talked with my administrative staff about prioritizing things and starting targets, and some discussions about how to get to certain numbers, but those, they're very ill-formed at this point. It's not something that I would be willing to do, bring to the public at this point. This kind of discussion, yes, the big broad-brush numbers, I think we should have, we can have open conversations with the public about, but what does that mean? Until we know what the federal government and state government are going to do, it's going to be hard for us to make those decisions. But we're also construed by timelines and deadlines that we don't get to just willy-nilly, the governor can almost rewrite the rulebook if he wants to. I can't, I have to comply with the law, so we're going to have to put a budget before the public in May unless the law changes. So we are on the clock now to get to a budget, and we're on the clock to explain what the budget is to the public, and what it means for services to kids, and what it means for the tax, taxes locally, and, so those explanations have to start to come up, come from us, and, you know, this is our first, one of our, this is our second conversation about it, but we're going to get more and more detailed about what it will mean, you know, if certain things occur in terms of budget cuts at the state, federal level. Do you guys have any other questions on that? Federal grants, I think that state education employees this year have a lot to, or they're most of them are working from home, and they seem to be able to get a lot more done, so the federal grants have been chunky this year in terms of they're asking us to change language, that we've had higher submissions. This year, we do our academic intervention services in the classroom at the elementary level, instead of having them go to academic intervention, so we submitted the grant with class size reduction for the purpose of being able to do academic interventions. They unsubmitted it, said, no, you have to attribute it all to academic interventions specifically, so we had to go and reclassify expenses to attribute like 20% of an employee's time to academic interventions in each class, instead of going in a much easier way for the business office. But it's the same outcome, doesn't affect the, doesn't affect the balance sheet, it just affects where your expenses are, and it's a pain in the neck, but we've done everything we're supposed to do, and I think they should all be resubmitted this week, I hope. Just a summary about where we are in terms of COVID. We've had two positive cases at the elementary since September 3rd. It's affected about 20 kids in each case, and we've had a few more cases, probably about 10 at the high school since September 3rd, and that's only one of them that impacted more than about 10 or 12 kids, and that was one that affected a whole grade level of about 80 students. The rest all impacted a small number of students and staff. There was also an exposure that affected about five staff members, that was, I think, maybe a week or so ago. The important thing for the public to know is that no case has been attributed back to those two cases at the elementary. So we've had a case in September, we put people on precautionary quarantine, and there were no further positives from that case, because the mitigation steps that we take here, or, so because we're masking, because we're social distancing, because we're cohorting and being very careful, even though there's been two cases, no other case has occurred that we're aware of as a result of that. That's really important to note. We've had 10 cases at the high school since September 3rd, which is quite a bit larger than the high school. However, again, each of those is a standalone case, which, when the Department of Health does contact tracing and looks back, they're not looking at the school for those cases. Those cases came to the school from outside, and they didn't, nobody else in those cohorts, even though they were quarantined, came down with COVID during the quarantine period that was reported to us and tested. So we are not seeing internal spread of COVID in the school. When you look statewide at the data, you're seeing the same thing. Even in places with high positivity rates, when they test randomly in schools, the positivity rate in schools is very low, and, you know, if you were watching the governor's press conference last, last week, no matter what your feelings are about him, in the end, he's saying that most of the spread is coming from the home. People go home, they take off their masks, they're talking to their friends, they're having people, they're having relatives come to their house, they're less cautious at home, and that's where the spread is occurring. So, you know, one of the messages that we're consistently giving to the community is that the school is the safest place for kids to be. The places where they're getting it are at small gatherings at home, or in a friend's house. They're not, it's not coming from the school. So you're seeing schools in the region shut down, but mostly they're shutting down because so many of their staff members are in quarantine, not because their staff numbers are sick, but because they're actually in quarantine. One of the things that we've done as a school is we've been, we reverse engineered from guidelines, made sure that we could operate safely, had extra staff on hand, so that we could weather the storm. And the reason why we invested literally millions of dollars open this year was to operate right now, to be able to operate right now safely so that kids can be safe. And that's, that's what the message that we're sending the community, that's the message I'm sending to them, schools are safe, our school is safe, it's the best place for kids to be, and we need to get through this together, and we're doing things that are safe, we're not doing anything that we think is not safe for our kids and our community. And the data all supports that. One of the things that we're going to see this, this week, is we are going to send a consent form home to parents, so that in the event that we become a yellow zone, we will be able to test the percentage of students that we need to stay open. So if you look recently, Oneida County has a yellow zone, the yellow zone goes right up to the border, may actually penetrate Herkimer County a little bit around Skyler, so that yellow zone is very close, it's not here. If the school is in that yellow zone, they can operate still, but they've got to test a certain percentage of their students and a certain percentage of their staff, and we're working with Herkimer County Bosse's to establish a testing system for kids in the event that we need kids and staff, in the event we need to stay open if we're in a yellow zone. You guys have any questions about that?
Did you mention that the letters are?
Yeah, they're going to go home tomorrow, Friday, after, after school is done, the consent form will go home to a parent's square. But testing will only begin if we need, if we need to test, or, you know, mandatory testing of that type will only begin.
Rob, real quick, I just, just out of curiosity, if, if we send that home, where does the consent have to come from? Custodial parent, the, the main parent, and parent's square, where, where does that come from?
The consent would have to come from one of the custodial parents.
Okay.
Any one of them.
Okay.
Before we start on the topic of, Rich is talking. Rich, you have the, I can't, Rich, we can't hear. Got anybody here? Do you think the mic's dead?
You typing in the chat?
Rich asks, can I talk about what testing would look like? Testing, so if we get, if we are in a yellow zone, we have to test 20% of our students over two weeks, and that testing would look like the following, the Department of Health will give us both the machinery for doing the testing and the tests. So let's take Herkimer Elementary. So if, if on January 28, Herkimer became a yellow zone, then, within a yellow zone, then we would notify the community that we're in a yellow zone, and we would notify parents that were, that had already gotten consent to us, because that's why we're asking for consent now, that they would allow testing, that they would allow testing. that they would allow testing, that we would like to test X students on, let's say, we test 50 students on Tuesday and then the following Tuesday we test another 50 students. That would get to us to 100, which is about 20%. What does a test look like? The test is the, is the shallow nasal swab. So it's not the one that they stick up that goes into your brain cavity. It's just a shallow one that, I should have brought a Q-tip. It's basically just a Q-tip of the, it's like picking your nose, that you just rub it right inside your nose. It's not, it's not that deep. And takes about 15 minutes and they'll know the result. That would be done by our nurses. So the kid would know, the kids would know, you know, Laurie, Sonia and Brenda and the LPNs. And, and they would just come in, they test and then they likely would be negative and then we, we move on. And that test data would get reported. If the test results are under the right positivity level to open, then you stay open. If they're not, you test again and then at some point you, you might have to be closed. Hopefully we would. Generally, when we looked at testing data around, around the state, it's very low. We are, we are testing a large number of kids right now, not in the school, but because we refer them to medical providers for testing because of symptoms, we're testing a lot and they're not coming back positive. Did that answer your question, Rich?
You also, the yellow zone, it's, it's the one-time, two-week testing, right? It doesn't continue?
It only continues if you don't get to the right percentage.
So if you get that in the first two weeks?
You hit that in the first two weeks, you test, you're clear. That's the way the guidelines read right now. These guidelines have changed like three times in six weeks though.
What happens, what happens if you don't get consent from a parent? Does that child not, are they not allowed to return to school?
We have to get, we got to get consent from enough students so that we can hit the percentages that we need to, to stay open.
But not signing the consent doesn't mean the child can't return to school.
It will only mean that if we don't get enough students so no one can say, come back to school.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So the message we're going to send to parents is, A of all, that it's not as bad as you think. Cause it's, it's just, it's the shallow nasal swab. And in order for us to stay open, we need to do this. So let's voluntarily do that. If, if we can't get to the percentages we need, then we might just have another conversation. Does that make sense? But right now I'd rather do it as a soft sell to say, let's, let's, we're all in this together. If we want to keep the elementary school open, we got to test. We want to keep the high school open, we got to test. So let's get as many people to do as possible.
But it kind of doesn't make sense because you can test one day and then end up with COVID the next. It's, it's going to depend on an incubation period. So it's almost like we're wasting tests on kids because chances are they're going to be negative anyhow.
Right, so this is surveillance testing. So you're not really, you're not really testing to see if a particular student has the, has the disease. You're really trying to test for what the positivity rate is in the school just generally. So in terms of surveillance testing, you don't really care whether individuals have it like the next day. You're really talking about an instant in time and saying, what's our positivity rate in this instant in time? So, so as far as the school's concerned, we're just interested in our positivity rate. But parents are going to be concerned about whether their child has, has COVID or not. So does that make sense at all? Like it's not really about that individual kid, it's about what's the positivity rate.
Okay, I don't agree with it. I think it's, I, I think it's crazy because you're going to test a kid who could get a negative result, but end up being positive the next day or two days later. And then they're spreading it to the community because they thought they were negative.
Well, we'll make sure we tell them that any test, and when you get the test result, it says, this is just for this instant. You could still have it. So the same thing might be true that a person might have COVID on Monday, we test them on Tuesday, but they got better. Like at some point you test positive and then you test negative. So this, when you're doing surveillance testing, the school's interest is not in that particular child, whether they have COVID or not. We're interested only in positivity rate. And that's why we're going to do the rapid antigen test and we're not really, we're not really looking at it as diagnostic. We're looking at it simply.
No, I get that and I understand this is protocol that we're being told that we have to do. I just think that this is crazy.
And I agree, I think testing in schools is a waste of the test. Those tests could be used in much.
Yes.
Places because the positivity rate in schools is so low. But I think that, that testing staff and students can give a sense of security that, that there is a low positivity rate. But it also, we should, we should say that to the community, that that's what we're doing this for. No test really says you're safe because even if, like you take, you take a test on Sunday and then three days later you get the result back, unless you stay in your home and don't have contact with anyone, you don't really know your, by the time you get your test result, you don't really know what your status is anymore because you've had, how many contacts you've had in that meantime. So a test is really about the instance you took it, which is only as good as that. So that means two hours later you could have had exposure, or two hours later it could have incubated. Yeah, all those things are valid points, but they're not the purpose of this. This is like, it is a bureaucratic thing to stay open essentially. To prove what we all know, which is schools are not dangerous. Go ahead. Go ahead, we can move on. I want to thank all the staff, administration, teachers, sports staff for the work they put in during the first four months of a difficult school year. I want to wish everybody a restful holiday break and that we are energized and ready to begin on January 4th, 2021, new year. We hope that 2021 will be a different year, especially once the vaccine for COVID-19 has been more widely distributed. And I wish everyone a happy holiday season and a healthy new year. It's not the last item on the list because I didn't want to put the last item on the list before that because I might never get to it. So we're going to talk a little bit about sports. And some of the implications of what's going on with sports. So high-risk sports have been delayed again indefinitely this time. This has caused some confusion around the state again and scheduling all remaining sports seems problematic. I think it's unlikely that indoor high-risk sports are allowed prior to March or April 2021 and even then they are unlikely to be allowed. The governor was completely dismissive of high-risk sports on a follow-up question after the budget director said they were delayed indefinitely at a prior news conference. He referred back to a slide where he said it caused about 3% of the transmission, I think, for high-risk sports. Locally, my thought is to turn the highest high school gym over to the contractors now in hopes that it will be completed by September so that we will have a fully functional facility when school starts next year, where we're much more likely to be in a position to fully utilize the facility. The longer we wait to turn the facility over, the contractors, the less likely it is the work will be completed in September. If, if we do this, it will formally end our winter season because there's no way we really can have a winter season without the use of the gym. We can prepare for fall too with football. Fields are problematic for that, but at least it's outside and spring with baseball, softball and traps. That would be my recommendation. I really just don't see how we're going to have indoor, indoor sports in, in this environment right now with inspection rates in the county now above 5% on a 10-day average. And I think it was over 10% yesterday on a, on one day, I think it was like 10.1%. Heading into January after Christmas and Easter, I don't see that rate being lower. So right now, winter, the winter season is January, February. So they've delayed from January 4th. How do you have a season between, let's say, let's say they, they said we could start winter sports a month from now and at the end of January, how do I have a winter sports season in February in one month?
Why do you have to do it in one month?
Because then the fall two starts for football.
Yeah, but that's, that's all highly speculative. What's, what's the original plan for the gym? When were you originally going to turn the gym over to the contractors?
When we were done with it.
So would that have been ready for the fall?
Probably not. So this is, this is one of those things where I would have been like, okay, well, we'll turn it over when we're done with it because we're using it. But right now, it's like, it's a pipe dream to think we're going to be using it for sports.
But you know how things go in the state and, and you're essentially having to get ahead of any decision made and that's where I have a problem with it.
I know. But I just, when I talk with people behind the scenes, that's the decision that just nobody's willing to announce. The decision is, was made. They just, when you say you're delaying something indefinitely, that's not like they're going to call me over Christmas and say we can start. They're not going to talk about sports again. They're just going to say it's delayed indefinitely until school ends. Then we're going to be done.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, if I had a crystal ball, I'd agree with you, but my opinion is, I mean, you're.
But we'll let that gym sit empty and then in the fall, when I need it, I won't have it. When I've got kids that can go in, that's, that's like the hard decision that we have to make now. Like if you make the decision to turn it over now, the fall, when we have PE classes again, all like, we have a vaccine fully implemented. They've taken back most of the restrictions, now we can use it. Right now I'm holding on to it, dreaming that I'm going to be able to play basketball. And frankly, the clock works against us. There's just no way, like what I, I had a conversation with somebody in the higher-ups in the sport world. I said, you guys, there's no way you can have three seasons, you guys have two. With that decision, there's only two seasons left for high-risk sports. And you can't put football, basketball and baseball together in schools our size. Like they have to be completely separate. So one of the sports, really that decision to delay means there's, you can only have either.
I would anticipate that winners, high risk going forward before trying to shovel off snow and marsh to play football.
I agree with that too, like it's got fields that are problematic. However, they're outside. So like in terms of COVID exposure, March, April is still problematic from everything the governor's saying. He's saying six to nine months now for any kind of returning arm. There was no four months, there was no two months, there's six months. Six months puts us in gym. So I don't, I just don't feel like they're going to let us do anything inside until next year. Which is why I think the only thing, the only sports we're going to be allowed to play that are contact are going to be outside. And football's a dream too, because I don't know if they're going to let us play that. Of course we'll contact sport.
All right, should, should we, can you wait until the next board meeting, see if there's an actual decision?
Right, every, we can, but it won't be. They're just, they're never going to talk about it again, that's what's going to happen. They're not going to talk about it until, they're going to let girls swimming go, they're going to let bowling go, they're going to let, things like that. When they say delaying indefinitely, that's a beautiful political word for we're never going to talk about it again. They're only going to give us good news. Nobody wants to make the decision, just like they didn't want to make the decision on football. So what did they do? They said, well, we'll play football in March and April. And we know in upstate New York, because how easy is it for us to play football in March and April? So now they're saying we're going to delay indefinitely high-risk indoor sports. And now, we can wait until the next meeting, but every month I wait, then this, it's one month that they're not working out of the facility. But then they're doing pretty major work in the gym in terms of reconfiguring.
So this is the part that we have to do?
It's informal, I wasn't going to have you vote on it. I'm just discussing it with you. I wouldn't put that on you. If there's not a consensus that we turn it over, we can wait.
I mean, the, the next board meeting is in three weeks and they wouldn't do much over Christmas break anyways.
Great, we can wait, I'm not posting.
I've been pro-sport since the beginning, but I'm tending to, to side with Rob at this point that even if they did say yes, like they did for fall sports, it took the section and then the conferences, another two to three weeks to decide if they would play too. So it's still push out an extra month just for all those different meetings that have to happen.
And, and remember that the schools that are closed right now because of COVID can't play sports. That's, so like when they were, when they were remote from the beginning of the year, like CBA was remote from the beginning of the year because they played sports. But that's not because they were, they were remote by choice, so they could play sports. But if you're shutting down because of the high positivity rate for COVID, technically you're not supposed to play sports. I mean, you can probably make up a different reason. It was staffing, it wasn't COVID. Well, why was, why was there a staffing issue? Well, they were quarantined for COVID. Well, to me that sounds problematic for a defense. So I, I think schools will be hesitant that are remote to get about. So it takes more than this Kirkmore deciding they want to play. It's, it's typical for me to envision schools that are now remote through most of January. There's many schools that are remote through most of January are going to be opening up their gyms, practices in that same timeframe. But perhaps.
Yeah, like Little Falls has been remote since Thanksgiving.
Is there a consensus that we wait till January? Three weeks is probably not that big a deal.
This is Diane. I, I would also like to know in January what the status of our opponents are. You know, who is back in, in session and you know, that, that's going to affect our decision also. If we don't have any opponents, then that decides it.
Well, there's people that say they're going to be our opponents right now because their EDs are saying that. But are the regulations going to allow them that they're closed for COVID? So they have a no for the, like I have leagues, they've developed leagues, they've developed schedules-ish. Not as though, not the, not the dates, because how do you develop dates without a certainty? But there are teams that, I can get that list to you guys for the next meeting, we can talk about that. I do have it, I just don't, I don't think, we should probably discuss it tonight, we'll know more by January, probably where people are at. So we'll hold off then and come back with more information in January about where people are at. But every month is a month I lose in, in, in the following year.
But was there a schedule for the gym to be turned back over at a certain time?
Yeah, it would have been when we're done with it. So, but the thing is, is that then I'm using it. So either end I'm going to be using it. Here I feel like it's different because I'm not really using it right now. So if I was using this, if I was using the gym for basketball and all these sports and open gyms right now, all the way through the spring, I'm going to wait and turn it over because it's being used. But what I feel bad about right now is it's not being used. I know it's probably not going to be used and I know that the fall can be used. So that's where I, you see what I'm getting at? Like for me right now, it's different in that I'm willing to give up some of the fall as long as I'm using it now. I'm going to have to give it up on one end or the other, I'll use it as long as I can and then we'll get it back as soon as we can in the fall. And the fall is a bad time to lose the gym either because you can be outside quite a bit. But now we're in this spot where I could get it all done maybe for sure by fall. Does that make sense? I'm not doing it because I want to cancel winter.
Well, you mean, yeah, but you're talking about a June start or a January start. And I'm saying we could probably get to somewhere in the middle. If we're in March, try it, listen, we know it's done, let's start it, it'll be done. You know what I mean? I don't think there's any reason to make a decision now indefinitely is with the governor's, if there's any other word he wants to throw around, I mean, that could change tomorrow or you can make a decision tomorrow. You know what I mean? So I, I don't feel comfortable making the decision on our own to say, yeah, we're done.
If, this is, this is one of those places where we're going to get terrible guidance from the state because NISFA doesn't want, nobody wants to make the decision to say that there's not going to be sports. So that's, if we're waiting for a decision, it isn't probably going to happen. Yeah, it's going to happen by clock. Like they'll run out, they'll run out January by work and then say, well, we can't have winter sports anymore because.
But we're still ahead of the game if we start four months earlier.
Yeah, I just worry about timelines. Bob will attest that the sooner you get them in, the more likely it is to get them out. What's your thought, Bob? You got your microphone?
Yeah, you know, we need to get the gym done now. There is such a shortage of material out there. We have problems getting material now, three or four weeks out. The longer we push this off, the longer it's going to take you materials for the job. This is crazy, we ought to do it now.
Yeah, but that wasn't your plan before, so why has it got to change now?
I'm just saying.
The plan was before was I was going to lose, potentially lose fall time. Like I was going to lose, like I was, it gets, once you close it off, turn it over and you don't get it back until you get it back. But you're okay with that because you're going to lose it on one end or the other. Here we're not losing anything on this end. I mean, if it was my, you know, I've been pretty certain that I could have turned the gym over in November, but I would have been, I've been patient because I know I want to get kids home. But the idea that we're going to bring people inside when I don't have the ability to do PE is crazy to me. I can't do PE, how can I have kids running around the gym?
You're answering me questions I can't answer.
I know, exactly. I mean, I got the, I got soccer, it's outside, big, open air, people are mostly away from each other. Basketball, I mean, you're basically in other, in the other guy's shorts most of the time. You're not, your hand checking constantly is not, you're pretty much in contact with people. There wouldn't be fouls if you weren't. So, but I also, it's lower numbers, I could argue that. Like there's, I can create an argument to say it's safe and if the regulations say it's safe, then it's safe. But I just don't think we'll get there. But three weeks would. But three weeks with Bob, the only thing that I will defend the three week thing is, is, is Rich is right. We're probably not going to do that much work over Christmas break. Thank God. Can we get to a compromise that we'll make a decision in January? How about that? You agree with that?
I like that. I like that idea.
I don't think we're going to know anything more here.
And if we don't know anything more in January, by the middle of January, then we know there is no winter season. Because if they make an announcement that they're going to start February, there is no way. And then.
Or there is no fall too.
Or there is a fall too.
That's my point.
But that's going to be.
I think you got more of a chance to play out winter and no fall two than you do.
I agree with you. Other than it's inside.
I'm not committing to January. I'm not going to change my position in January because we're not going to know anything different. So.
I know. Well, maybe we'll know something by January. I think section three will make a decision about, there's only two sports seasons left by mid-June. And that's again, one where we don't, we aren't going to be the only ones to make that decision. So some schools are big football towns. No matter what, they're going to be out shoveling fields. They're going to have football. They've been waiting to play football since March and they're, there are towns that are probably like that. I think Canisoda is going to play football. They got a church field anyway, but you know, they're, they're going to play football fall too. They're not going to play basketball. I think. If they're allowed, do you disagree with that? Like there are schools that are gone. Oh, there's no way.
I don't disagree with any of them. I just don't think we should make decisions when we don't need to.
Well, we're, I think if we don't make a decision, if there's no sports, if we don't get high, high risk sports this season and we wait too long and we lose the gym. And there's materials delays and contract delays and we don't get the gym back until next March, we'll have regretted this decision. So there are, there are definitely downsides to not making the decision now because you never know when you're going to get a facility back when you turn it over.
The longer. I got you. And I'm not going to beat dead horse, but the plan was what the plan was. And if we have material concerns, then why do we have them now?
I, well, I would have concerns then too, but I don't have any choice. Like if I, if, if the gym's in use right now and the gym's in use in the spring and the gym's going to be used in the summer and the gym's, I'm going to have to lose time. So the choice would be then, do I want to lose gym time in the spring or do I, right now, the gym is not in use. That's the difference. Like it's not, we are not in the same spot we were when we just said, we're going to turn it over when we're done with it. We're not, because we don't really think that we're probably going to use it again. So don't you think the conditions are different than when we just, when we made the plan for gym use now versus gym use in the fall?
And we didn't have material issues back then because manufacturers weren't shut down not making materials. That all changed with COVID too. I just, I kind of like Rob said, I'd hate to, hate to think we lose two full seasons if this does get delayed into next March, when, once we start fixing it.
And we're not doing it randomly. I think that's the thing. Like I'm not just coming to you and saying randomly, let's just shut it down. You know what I mean? It's not, and there's a reason for it. It's not, if we, if we don't have it next year, we'll be kicking ourselves for not turning it over.
Get you. You got a whole bunch of kids that have already got hit in you know what. We're going to do it to them again right now. I don't think, I don't think it's fair.
We're not doing anything. We got, what we. So, so.
The last time I.
We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be making decisions ahead of anything. So let me ask you this. If, if there is no basketball this season and there is no football this season because of the rules. And we hold on hope and hold on hope and hold on, and then we turn it over and then we don't have the gym back next year. Then these kids are going to get kicked in the teeth again for second year in basketball because we're not going to be able to play here. We're going to figure out something else. So definitively, I'm almost certain we're going to be able to play basketball next year. And I'm like almost a hundred percent certain we're not going to be able to play basketball this year. So to me, the cost benefit analysis says it's, the hope is that they get to play next year in a brand new facility that's done. And it's done on day one of school and it's usable. And that, the best hope for that is to turn that over as soon as possible. But whether we do it now or whether we do it in January, I don't think it's, but if we push this off the March, April, May, the likelihood that we're not ready to open is high. Cause if we turn it over, if we turn it over in the normal course, I was pretty, we were pretty certain we probably wouldn't be able to open gym in, in March or in September. The hope would be that we'd be ready by October. September, October, when the, when it gets further.
You're looking at me like you don't believe me. No, I believe everything you're saying, but you know my position. If, if you want to vote out of now, because I'm not, I'm not going to change January.
Or I don't even need to vote. Like I mean, I just wanted to have a conversation with you and then we can, I can bring it back to the facilities committee too. And we'll come back. How about that? How about the facilities committee? We'll discuss it. You guys can make a recommendation to the board in January and then we'll go from there. Is that fair?
And also, well, we have more information about the timeline on the contractor. I mean, we're supposing that the contractor is at our beck and call, but we don't know that to be true. So the facilities committee could also have more information on the availability of the contractor.
They're, they're begging to get in there to do the work. But I would get that, like I'll let Dennis update them, but they really want to get in there. This is the time when contractors need work. Like there, there isn't a lot of work out there. So if they can get their crews in, this is the time when they can get it done. Am I wrong about? You're giggling.
I, I think you are. The flooring for my project in Little Falls is eight weeks away. Right? If we postpone this for another month or something, who knows how long it's going to be. We can't get material on the job right now.
There's a lot of that work we got to do.
You never know, Rob, with, with COVID, we had, electrical contractor had one guy test positive and their COVID protocol says they have to leave the job for four days. So yesterday they pulled off the job for four days and many of the contractors had the same protocol. So we're not getting any electrical work done for four days. I mean, I don't, I don't take the chance. Are you just going to ruin the fall sports or whatever you're going to do later on? I mean, if you've got an opportunity to do it, you got to do it now.
I'm with you, but I want to have, I don't want to have consensus. I don't really want to move in a divided fashion if we can't avoid it.
So I, I have a question. So I kind of agree that I don't think we're going to end up playing winter sports. But say we go ahead with the gym and something happens where we can play winter sports, then what do we do?
Then we go play winter sports. That's why. It is a decision we're making. We could play volleyball at the elementary building.
It's your regulation court up there.
What's that?
That's your regulation court.
That's where they play.
Oh, same.
Yeah.
Well, you know what? We're not going to have, we're not going to have spectators more than likely at the indoor sports anyway. So if we did do basketball up there, it would probably be fine.
Any kind of basketball we do this year is going to be pretty low key. It can be local. There's not many state tournaments. It's not going to be, it's going to be similar to soccer. It's going to be pretty low key. I mean, it's, it's more intense than soccer in terms of how close contact and things like that might be more emotional. I don't know, but it's, it's a, it's not going to be like past years where you have sectional play and lot riding and things. It's going to be more local and low key. And it's going to require a lot of cooperation from various teams to agree to that. Like there's so much confusion now because half the teams, there's about half the teams in the section or more, 60% that didn't do any fall sports at all. So they've still got to do, their fall two has got everything in it. So it's, it's more complicated than it's ever been interested in those respects because so many people did so many different things. So I guess we have the, if we turn over the high school gym, then there is possibility of an elementary gym used for something potentially, if we decided to do that, if it was left. At some limited basis.
Yeah. Rob, if we did turn it over and got lucky and they said, yeah, you can go play basketball now, could we commit to a away game schedule only? That way the kids could still play?
Practice here, here away, away, possibly.
I say we start the work.
I agree.
We know how Bob feels.
I agree with Scott where I don't want to make a decision before we know anything, but I kind of agree. And if the kids have a chance to use the elementary gym, then I'm okay with starting the work.
I mean, and the use of, of use in figuring it out is like problem, like there are a lot of problems no matter what we do in terms of figuring this all out. So I don't want to, I don't want to walk away from this thinking we're definitely going to have a sports season though, right? Like it's no matter what, like if it's a cocaine and we figure it all out, it's like, there are so many pieces between us and any kind of season and either this, any of these sports and fall two, just because of the complications of fall two has got so many different people doing different things. And what's going to be allowed is not, it's crazy. Cause you're going to have, you could potentially have some schools playing soccer in fall two. You could have some schools playing football. You could have some schools playing basketball. It's going to get a mess. So if we turn the gym over, the idea would be that potentially we could use the elementary for some sports. Is that what we're thinking?
Yeah. I like the idea. I, I think we should turn it over to get the work done. But I'd, I'd also like to think that we could be creative with finding ways that if they said yes, we could accommodate and let all those kids still play. And I said away games for basketball only, volleyball at the elementary school.
So we turn it over, we turn over the gym and then we wait for a decision from the state. And then we have another discussion about what we're going to do because I think there's going to be a lot of choices in front of us and what's feasible. And we probably ought to have Christie Way in too on what's feasible. Practice wise, you start taking out a big gym, practice times and practice crunch in there for volleyball, basketball. Certainly we wouldn't probably be able to have all levels at the same time practicing. So there are some logistical issues there that I think, it sounds good when we say it here, but we'd have to try to figure it out. So you're okay with us turning it over as long as we're going to try to make an effort to make it work if possible. But no promises, because it's just, it's so complicated in fall two.
Bob, I don't think we turn it over, but the rest of the board is just fine.
So we're going to turn it over. That's the consensus without fully everybody on board.
Yeah. And Rob, can you, can you update us like as soon as you find out what the contractor's schedule is? Thank you.
In fact, why don't we, do you want to have the building committee meet like Monday or Tuesday next week to talk with?
Are we concerned at all with having extra bodies in the school to do this work while school's in session? I, I guess that's my, one of my issues, you know?
I'm not really that worried about it because they work down in the section of the gym that they're, that section of the school is completely closed off. They don't come in our, our area. We do have contractors in all the buildings right now on second shift doing like ventilator work. It's going to be a lot of work over Christmas break in the elementary building. And there's like electricians doing, doing fire alarm wiring right now at night. But for the most part, the work is done. At the elementary building, the work is being done. In the locker room area, they're not coming into the school. In the high school, they're working down in the, the GCs are working in the locker rooms and in the gym. And there's somebody in those areas and there's not that much work going on right now anyway, because they're waiting for me to turn over the gym. They've done almost everything they can, other than starting to do the demo work in the gym and move the things and order the materials and supplies. So we're going to turn the gym over and we're going to discuss the, the plan for fall two at some point when the state comes around with the decision about what that looks like. Does that sound great? And it's, it's, it's going to be a mess. I can tell you that right now. It's going to be a mess. Nobody's doing the same things in fall two. That's all I have.
I would assume the EDs would coordinate and figure out who's going to do what, what's feasible.
But they got to get through their seven or five member board too. Like who's got kids in basketball? Who's got kids in football? Who's got kids in soccer? But fields are available. Like all of those questions are going to be circulating. Like there are schools right now that, there's some schools, as you said, I think at the AD meeting, that if we show up and everybody's not wearing masks, we're going to just turn around and go. For, for basketball or any indoor, like everybody's going to wear masks the entire time. If we're not, then we're not going to play. That's how serious the conversations are for some of the schools about masks. Meaning some of the stuff we saw during season with masks not being on, may not fly this winter, some of the schools, the games will just end. So administrative reports. Who's up first?
Zach, yeah. Do we have any questions for Mr. Abby?
I did. I'm just pulling the report up.
So the streaming between the classrooms is kind of like what the elementary has been doing from the beginning with the team teaching. How's that been working with the sixth and seventh grade or sixth grade?
Yeah. It's, um, so today was our second full Wednesday of doing it. And the bigger reason that it's like so elaborate and that we're kind of taking our time with it is where it's different from the elementary is you're just one room at any point in the day, whereas there's still like a full rotation of classrooms. So we're talking about eight rooms simultaneously streaming between each other with a rotation of classes. Then with an opposite rotation on the following day, so that every student is getting all four core areas. Plus every other day they're getting, where the teacher is in the actual room to them. So they're not stuck always being like the audience room or one group's always getting instructor room. So there's a lot of moving pieces on a daily basis, but it's going really well. The teachers are thrilled. Kids are, are given really positive reviews as well. So it's, it's something that we're looking to expand after break and shifting to multiple days a week and potentially even five days a week.
Zach, what, it's going to sound stupid, but what was it before this?
So we were working in a similar schedule, but where you don't have, we didn't have necessarily the ability to stream between rooms. So we had to add in dual monitors so that, and cameras in every single room so that the teacher could see the kids in the other room. And the kids in the other room could see the teacher. So what they were working on was kind of a hybrid model. But as opposed to where our older grades, where we kind of, our kids are out of the building when they're working on their remote tests, their asynchronous test. Those were occurring during the school day in the building with assistance from an LTA. So since they're our, our youngest kids, we're providing more supervision for them, but they were still kind of operating in more of a hybrid model. So this is allowing us to increase our live instruction time.
So you talked about audience and instruction group now. Was that the same way before? And there was just an LTA in the room versus a teacher?
Right. But those tests, they weren't necessarily synchronous and live with that core teacher at that time. So it was things that would be like posted in Google classroom, similar to what our older kids are doing at home where things are posted. Um, videos for them to work through tasks. Um, so they didn't necessarily have that access to the teacher right there live in the moment. They could get assistance the following day or through email, but they weren't able to have it, you know, right there at that moment. We felt like that's where we, we weren't getting enough. And so we've been working basically this entire year to find a way to increase it. You know, if, if possible, that's the perk of having sixth grade there every day is we've got them here in the building. You know, what can we do with our technology to make it, you know, better than what we felt like we were getting out of it at that point?
Mr. Abby, do the teachers alternate which room they're in?
Yeah, they do. So, and that's why there's so many moving pieces and it's taken a little time to get to the. Yeah, they do. So, and that's why there's so many moving pieces and it's taken a little time to get to this point. So those kids stay put still in their cohort, in their classroom. Uh, the teachers rotate through, you know, four different rooms throughout the day. And then on alternating days, they rotate through the other four. So essentially like if you just take like any one random sixth grader, they'll have two chunks of their day where they've got the teacher right there in the room with them. And then two chunks of the day where they've got the LTA, but now they have the teacher streaming into the room as well.
Anybody else have any questions?
Ms. Tomaso's up next. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Tomaso? So, oh no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, I was just curious, um, uh, the, the, the block schedule that's, that's getting converted into a period schedule. Can you just talk about that really quickly?
Sure, um. So in our hybrid model, um, teachers basically teach half a class one day, half the class the other day. Um, Wednesday is when they are working on remote instruction and then Thursday and Friday they did the same thing. So what we do in converting it to a period schedule is take the A and B day cohorts, put them into one class. Um, and then create a period schedule. So instead of one hour classes, um, twice a week, it's 40 minute classes, five days a week. So it really is a considerable instructional mindset shift to do that. Um, but as I outlined in the report, there are a lot of things we've evolved to this point for remote instruction because the hybrid model is not engaging all of the students to the potential that we had intended to and hoped to. So with a little bit of training, with a little bit of kind of recalibrating the mindset in a period schedule, at least the students and the teachers would absolutely have face-to-face contact every day. Because in a hybrid model, it's impossible. Um, because the students, the teachers are teaching one set of students one day and another set of students the next. So it increases contact time, um, and will hopefully I don't know, just kind of hold everybody accountable in terms of academic performance. We hope. So it's evolved, but on our first remote day, we just took the hybrid schedule and used that. And that wasn't what we wanted it to be. And then we had a half day trial and those 30 minute time slots were just too short. Um, so here's where we are. We'll see how that works and I'll get feedback from students and teachers next week and take it from there. But that's another nice thing about us having been in school already is that we can evolve. You know, if other places haven't even started yet, like it's a, it's a big process to figure this out and keep moving forward and keeping, making improvements. So, so that's what we're doing.
So Mary, you went, you went to the, you went away from the block schedule?
No, we have a hybrid schedule. But when there's a 100% remote day, we wanted to create an opportunity for all students to engage with all teachers. And so the best way to do that was to create more periods in the day so that everything could fit in. But if you're going to have more periods in the day, they have to be shorter also. So we will continue. We're on a hybrid schedule. But I think it's important for us to be prepared for, um, remote learning, should it happen in extended model. So these are opportunities for us to practice what that might be like if we are forced to close.
So like on your, on your Wednesdays or your off days, you're not adhering to that period schedule?
In the, in the off days, there's a lot of in-person instruction that's going on. Um, even though you know, the, the kids that are in school on the Mondays or Tuesdays, some of them are there on Wednesdays. It also brings in the CTE group. Um, so Wednesdays are different than the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday days.
You had said something in here. Oh, it wasn't a, something you mentioned that it wasn't effective and I was trying to find it, but I was trying to listen to you too. There was something that you didn't like with, with that trial that you did on the, on the December 24th? Or yeah, not December 21st, we're not there yet. But it's, you mentioned something that you were, it wasn't, uh, effective in your report.
What I was, what I think you might be referring to is the hybrid remote situation in that in the hybrid remote model, we're finding that probably 30% of the kids are not living up to their commitment in what needs to be done at home and to the extent that it needs to be done at home. And there are a lot of good reasons for that. Um, sometimes the environment isn't conducive to the learning. Um, sometimes the wifi access is spotty. It has to be, the broadband has to be shared with lots of people in the household. And sometimes there's just not the structure at home where a student will sit down and do the tasks that have been assigned to them. So it's been, um, it's challenging to engage everybody in the remote learning that is expected in order to achieve the instructional objectives that we have. So teachers are planning remote instruction. Um, but it requires a commitment on the other end in order to make it effective. And we're having a hard time getting that at the 100% level that we need. So perhaps by shifting the model for a remote day, we, we hope to engage more students. Um, but we still have those same obstacles that we have to work through. There's a lot of moving parts.
Mary, hi, this is, uh, Diane. Um, given tonight's forecast, what would you call tomorrow if the roads were impassable? Is that going to be a remote day or a day off? And just as a general thing, not knowing what the weather will end up being.
I think that's a question that Mr. Miller should feel, feel.
Asking for a friend.
Started our day today, right, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, that's the beginning of my day today. So what we have built into the schedule, the original calendar day was 185 days. Juneteenth is a holiday now, which means we only have 184 days. We have to have 180 days of school. The four days are typically called snow days. They're actually emergency days where you don't have to be attendance. We will use those four days like we traditionally do. So tomorrow, if the roads are bad, we're going to have a snow day because we can't get to school safely. We can't transport kids. Or we're going to delay school for an hour because we need to wait a little bit of while for the, for the snow plows to go. We are not going to declare a remote day tomorrow. One of the, a remote snow day. One of the things you should understand is that you can only really do that if you also provide lunches to all the kids. So that means you have to bring in your kitchen staff to provide lunches. You have to transport CTE kids still if CTE is open. You have to transport all your special ed kids that open special ed programs or you can't run a remote day. So the state said, yeah, you can do remote snow days, but then they said, well, here's all the things you have to do in order to do it. So I think I could plan a remote snow day on a nor'easter that we know is going to come. Sometimes we know for like three days, we're going to get two feet of snow. And we could probably plan, we could get them the lunches in advance and we could probably plan if we needed to. But when I met with the unions and talked with the various unions about this, what I said was we're going to use snow days like we traditionally do until such time as we don't have snow days left and then we'll have to make a plan. So tomorrow won't look any different to parents than any other day. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I, I guess I was thinking, um, you know, when, um, you know, Mary was, um, talking about, you know, the student engagement and I was thinking that would be a very low day for student engagement if on top of that you might have power issues, et cetera.
So what's complicating things for us, like in the county is you have schools that are fully remote right now. So what is tomorrow for them? And some of it's subjective, like I don't know. I don't manage those schools. How are they providing lunches? Maybe they're providing lunches for the week, so they don't really worry about it. I don't know. But it's not as easy for schools, even the ones that are fully remote, depending on how they're doing some of their underlying systems or whether they have special ed classes outside of district, to do what, to call that still a remote day. It's much more complicated than what it looked like in, in September. But we're in, in normal shape. We have four snow days right now. If we use one tomorrow, we use one tomorrow, we have three. And then beyond that, we can whole plan just like we always do. But the parent, parents won't see much different from us yet about a snow day being a remote day. Uh, Monday is a remote day, but not because of weather. Monday is a planned remote day and the lunches will be delivered. It's almost easier to have a planned remote day than it is to have a snow day remote day. If that makes sense. I think. I mean, I know we're running into that administratively. The, the idea of making sure that all the elementary kids have their computers at home. I think, you know, Renee or, or Christie could talk to that. That's difficult because they don't always bring them home. So a spontaneous remote date presents problems. So the story answer for tomorrow is tomorrow, our kids at least can get excited too about potential for a snow day so they can have their sleepless night about, wake up and be excited about it. I'm not sure what's going on everywhere else.
What are we using Tuesday? What are we doing then?
Tuesday is a conference day that was, I would say that we, we had an October conference day that I canceled. And I canceled it so that I could extend it to, to when I did that, I made that calendar change. I did that, I told you that I did that so that I could string together conference days and other days to get longer breaks to extend through the quarantine periods.
Doesn't affect days.
Doesn't affect anything because it's all, it's all a part of the plan that we put in place when we readjusted the calendar back in September at this point. It could now on the road.
Yeah.
But we, a lot of schools use a lot of days and started in September, like late September, mid fourth. And I said, I was cautious about that because I figured that was a time when I knew I could be in school and I knew there was going to be times when it was going to be problematic for quarantine reasons, more than safety reasons to, to be able to close. So that's what we're doing right now. We're really just implementing the plan that we had in, in the fall. Does that answer your question, Diane?
Yes.
So another sleepless night for the superintendent waiting to see how much snow we get tomorrow. While all the virtual superintendents are snuggling their bed, I will be with. Um, let's see, Renee?
Uh, Fleek, she's on.
Oh, yeah, Christine and Renee are not here.
Yeah.
So did you guys have any questions about the elementary report? I can pass back to her, she can give back to you, or do you want to just?
Uh, just, the only, the only thing I wanted to say was, um, I, I see that, um, middle school and high school have, uh, professional development days. What, what are the elementary doing on Tuesday? Same thing?
They are doing a technology, set of, a series of technology workshops in the morning, I think.
Okay.
Matthew and Ryan, Mr. Rilio and Mr. Matthew are doing technology workshops and then they're doing grade level meetings, I think in the afternoon or vice versa. I can't remember which order it goes.
Oh, okay. So we're still working on our technology. That's good.
When is the high school, middle school doing their technology, Zach or Mary? Because you guys are doing it opposite the elementary, right?
Yeah, we are, the elementary starts with the technology PD and we, we flip flop. We end our day with it.
So, so elementary will probably be technology in the morning. I think they say grade level meetings in the afternoon and then high school will be something in-house in the morning and then technology in the afternoon.
Correct. Yep.
That's good.
I just wanted to kind of, I think that, um, that book giveaway that Renee implemented up there is quite a stir. I think it's, it gets, gets excited about that. Just thought that was a good idea.
And if you look at the sports report, our GPAs were good this year.
Yeah.
I think, I think we made honors and everything. If we don't run any more sports, we're going to get one of those certificates that are, that all of our sports teams are at in the conference this year. That'll be the first time in a record school to certify.
But it would have the asterisk next to it.
There'll be no asterisks, no asterisks. Anything else for any other questions? Um, staffing recommendations, looking for a motion?
Um, Mr. Mihovic?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table staffing.
Table?
We have a motion to table. We got a second. Ms. Fisher? All those in favor? Seven, zero?
Looking for motion on CSC CPSC recommendations?
Diane, you got a second? Uh, Rich? All those in favor? Seven, zero?
Turn it over to you, sir.
I, I just wanted to echo your sentiment earlier about thanking the, um, administrative team, the faculty and staff that we have on, on staff. It's just been an amazing year. I'm just so glad that we've been able to give these kids an education in class as much as we have. And I just wanted to thank all the, um, first responders and all the, uh, workers out there that are out there every day. And also the, the parents that have had to, um, help us, uh, with, with their kids' education daily. And that's all I have. Anybody else going around the table? Um, so next on the list is future meeting dates.
Pulling up my calendar now.
Yep.
I have January 13th.
13th, yeah.
Is that ever, okay with everybody? We must have known the governor wasn't going to come out with an aid proposal on January 20th this year. Do you want to wait? He's not coming up. He's not going to write a budget until February.
If, um.
Is that just a regular board meeting or is there any committee meetings?
I don't think we have a committee meeting scheduled for that.
Okay, so next on the list is meeting evaluation with Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I think the meeting went well. Lots of information. I think we're getting the hang of this virtual stuff. That's about it. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a particular employee, a particular student and negotiations and discussion of a particular personnel. The board may take action in public session after the executive session ends and the board returns to public session.
So we have a motion. Can we get a second? Diane? All those in favor? Seven, zero? So it's 7:30 now, like five minutes?
You want to stop the streaming and stop the recording?